Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 18th meeting of the City Williamsburg Planning Commission. Ms. Murphy, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Schaller, Mr. Klee.
Here.
Mr. Conlin.
Here.
Mr. Farakis.
Here.
Ms. Macbeth.
Here.
Ms. Stafford.
First item on the agenda, the approval of the minutes of February 18th. Does anybody have any revisions or comments for those minutes? No, hearing none, I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 18th, 2015.
Second.
Ms. Murphy.
Mr. Klee.
Aye.
Mr. Conlin.
Aye.
Mr. Farakis.
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth.
Aye.
Okay, moving into our public hearings, our first public hearing is PCR 15-002. That's a request to Williamsburg Chrysler Jeep Kia for a special use permit for an expansion of the dealership, and I believe it was for parts area.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, this is a request for an addition just over 1,900 square feet for the Williamsburg Chrysler Jeep Kia dealership on Richmond Road. The applicant notes the expansion is needed for replacement parts and specialized equipment that is presently filling every nook and corner of the existing shop. This property is designated as corridor commercial in the 2013 comp plan, which notes that this category designates land on the city's heavily traveled entrance corridors for commercial and service uses primary oriented to the automobile. The surrounding properties to the north, south, and east are designated corridor commercial, with the land to the west designated low-density, single-family detached dwelling residential. The property along with the properties to the north, south, and east are also zone corridor business district B2, with the property to the west being zone single-family dwelling district RS2. I have included in my memo the SUP requirements and staff does not feel that any additional studies are needed in order to make a decision on this request. The site plan review committee reviewed this request last month and recommends approval. And basically, in this overhead, this sort of red area here is the part that's where the addition is going. The architectural review board approved the addition, which will match existing materials and colors at their January meeting. This 4.3 acre site meets all the basic city zoning requirements. The B2 district requires 20% landscape open space and the site contains 36%. All existing entrances, lighting, and landscaping will not be affected by the new addition. The small addition will allow the dealership the needed space which is appropriate since it will match the existing design and will be located towards the rear of the building. Therefore, staff recommends that planning commission recommend to city council that a special use permit be approved for the addition as requested by the applicant. Staff also recommends planning commission approval of the site plan, condition upon city council approving the special use permit for the new addition. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Mr. Gerling is also here, who represents the applicant, if you have any questions of him.
So Carolyn, I mean, when I was looking at this, to me it looks like it's enclosing like a little recessed area, not really putting an addition. So there's nothing that's closer to the-
Yeah, it's coming out in here a little bit and comes out a little bit in here, more than what you see on that, but yes, it's basically enclosing this area back in here.
Okay, so it is slightly bigger, but so it's enclosing an area that's not going to actually get any closer to the single-family home units.
That's correct. Single-family, Pioneer Creek is back and Savannah Green are back in that area.
Any other questions, Ms. Murphy? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward and speak on the matter, please do so now. State your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, come back to commission.
Yeah, I mean, despite my question, I mean, I guess the question was just to clarify what I thought, which was that this is a very minor impact, and it seems like I would be happy to move this unless there's need for more discussion on this.
I agree.
Okay, so I would like to move the adoption of PCR 15-002 as laid out in the staff memo.
Checking. Ms. Murphy?
Mr. Klee.
Aye.
Mr. Conlin.
Aye.
Mr. Farakis.
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth.
Aye.
Okay. Your application has been approved.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Moving on, PCR 15-003, and I understand we're going to take 003, 4, 5, and 6.
Correct.
Together. Okay, Reed?
This is a package of zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan changes that was developed based on city council's discussions about the issue of converting hotels and motels in the city's B2 districts into permanent housing. These changes relate to the goal of preserving land for commercial development and redevelopment in these B2 areas which are designated corridor commercial in our comprehensive plan, and to provide for an opportunity for converting a limited amount of existing hotel motel rooms to adaptive housing for the purpose of providing a non-permanent affordable and flexible term housing option for individuals and families who may not have access to traditional housing alternatives existing in the city. So I'll go through these cases one by one. The first is hotel motel length of stay. It's currently 90 days with exceptions for employees, managers, and rooms and suites with complete kitchens, say like you'd find at the Residence Inn. This is part, sort of odd in that it's part of the hotel motel definition. What we're proposing is to remove the length of stay regulations from the definition, and it would take effect in July, and this would give council a chance to make an amendment to another section of the city code, Article 9, dealing with license permits and business regulations. So, in addition, the visitor definition has its length of stay changed from 90 to 30 days since this definition is needed for other uses. The amendment, just for your information, the amendments we're looking at, when we get to the point of looking at that with council, would, as I mentioned, create a 30-day standard length of stay with more flexible exceptions. We'd be looking, we're looking at adding an exception for persons engaged in employment activities as an employer, independent contractor, with documentation on file of the hotel or motel, and with the principal place of residence that's not the hotel or motel. We're also looking at exception for temporary housing for families in crisis receiving assistance from the Williamsburg Human Services Department. We would look at continuing the current exemptions for hotel motel employees and managers and extended stay rooms and suites with complete kitchen facilities, but that's going to be, that will not come back to the commission, that will be worked on by city council. The second case is to revise the residential uses in our B2 districts. Right now, multifamily dwellings, condominiums, and townhouses are allowed with a special use permit, but limited to no more than 67%, two-thirds of the proposed of the total floor area. And that's the provision under with the QuarterPath Associates' request, which is currently deferred by council, was submitted. To clarify this provision, the ordinance you have before you revises the B2 regulations to state that residential uses would need to be in conjunction with new development or major development, and would not include the reuse of existing buildings. So under this provision, existing hotel motel buildings could not be converted to residential use, but that's the reason we've added the proposed PDH district. Then 15-005 amends various sections of the comprehensive plan, and that ties in directly with case 004. This just changes the language so these two cases match in saying residential. We're still keeping the option of two-thirds residential, but that's in conjunction with new development or major redevelopment, and not reuse of existing buildings. The one case we have approved for this is the project that was the Shops on Second Street that's been built, and there were 29 condominium-style townhouses in the back. That was the one-thirds, two-thirds, and that was all new residential construction, so that would still be allowed with a special use permit. The last case, 15-006, creates a new planned development housing district, and this is to deal with the need for creating some alternative housing and doing this in some of our existing hotels and motels. So, we've had extensive conversations with city council, we had original initial discussion, then staff came back with proposed ordinance, and original proposal was to allow only one hotel or motel to be converted to residential use with a maximum of 60 units. Council modified this concept to say a maximum of 100 units citywide, no individual project exceeding 50 units, and there would be no limit on the number of projects so long as you don't exceed the 100 unit total. And what I had in my memo is just a mention that the commission needs to look at this and be, and make sure that this is the benchmarks that you think should be in this proposed ordinance. The major features of the PDH district, and this is our same planned development procedures that we've used for Tribe Square, for Capital Landing Green, and this project seems to work pretty good. But you'd need, you can only rezone to PDH if you're currently zone B2. It's only allowed for existing hotels and motels. Adaptive housing is defined as primarily efficiency in one-bedroom units with adequate cooking facilities created from all or part of an existing hotel motel, and used for the purpose of providing non-permanent affordable and flexible term housing for individuals and families who may not have access to traditional housing alternatives existing in the city. And like I said, there'd be a maximum of 100 with no more than 50 in any individual project. A new parking requirement is created, so you wouldn't be put in the position of exceeding the current parking requirement for the hotel or motel. Details would be, need to be provided as part of the rezoning process. I guess, and again, another similar case we did was City Lofts, which was converting a hotel into student housing. So, and with all this in mind, the commission needs to make a recommendation to city council on these four cases. And if the commission makes a recommendation this afternoon, this will then be on the council agenda for a public hearing at the April 9th meeting. So those are the comments I have. Be glad to answer any questions, if you have them.
All right. Go ahead.
So I just had one question, because the Copper Fox is doing this, right? They're converting existing hotel motel building to a residence, not multifamily residence, but a primary, are they grandfathered to this point of fact?
No, the residence that they are converting is actually in the single-family residential zone portion of their property.
Okay, so that's why it's not an issue, because we haven't created an issue there. Okay, that was one question. And then the second question is, the number limit is only for this PDH district overall, and were someone to come with a proposal similar to the City Lofts apartment to convert an entire building, then nothing in this ordinance would restrict us from considering another PDU. Is that correct?
Right, now, the, this is completely separate from the PDU. The PDU is limited only to the, to that, the specific area around where City Lofts is, but this has no impact on the PDU. That was not located in the B2 district.
But we created the PDU. Before City Lofts, there was no PDU.
Correct.
So if someone came and wanted and said, "I like what Demetrius has done, I'd like to do something similar," there's nothing in this PDH that limits us from doing a different PDU in a different-
Someone can apply for rezoning at any point.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't.
I had a couple of questions also, Reed. The current SUP that was submitted by QuarterPath Associates is, where does that stand?
That has been deferred by city council until July. We have, you have as information in this agenda packet, the same applicant has applied for a PDH rezoning for that property, the QuarterPath Inn, and that would be scheduled for consideration at the April Planning Commission meeting. But needless, but the special use permit for that, that the commission unanimously recommended in favor of, that is still on the table until July.
So hypothetically here, if we pass the PDH and it goes to city council and passes, then that SUP would go away? No, it would still stay in effect?
If the property is rezoned pursuant to, if planning commission and ultimately council adopts this new district, and eventually if council also approves the rezoning of the QuarterPath Inn property, then SUP would simply, we would need them to withdraw it, or council would have to turn it down.
Okay.
Based on the rezoning.
And I guess vice versa, if we did not approve the PDH and council did not approve the PDH, he could continue along with this SUP?
Yes.
Okay, correct. Any comments or questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on these matters. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Terrence Wheel, 4012, Tubman Drive. I just want to give some impressions that hopefully would help. I understood that an SUP was, and I may need clarification on this, but SUP can be turned down for whatever reason. It's up to you, if someone's asking for a special use, you don't have to justify your reason to turn it down. And if that's the case, I feel that these changes are just complicating and what already exists, which is to allow someone to do something with their property that they would like to do. This actually makes it a bit discriminatory against the person that doesn't have a lot of money or a lot of means in terms of new development requirements and such. And it seems like we're trying to anticipate things that might happen and trying to put them in little boxes so that they'll go in a particular direction, where I feel like the SUP is a great tool, because it allows you and council to make judgments based on what the property owner is presenting to you at that time without having to anticipate. So, I might be wrong about that, but that's what I thought the SUP was designed for, really, was to handle these, all these different situations, which we now seem to be trying to code to anticipate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I'll close the public hearing and come back to commission for discussion. As we discussed last time, when we heard QuarterPath Associates' SUP application, our comp plan, we had intended in the B2 to make that new development. We never intended for an adaptive reuse of the motel. I believe we unanimously felt that it was a good project, something good for the city could work. City council has, I guess, tweaked things a bit and sent it back to us for review, but I think it sort of still accomplishes the same thing. I'm not sure if I'm quite comfortable with the 100-room limit, or, but I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say about that.
Well, I guess I'll start. Yeah, I mean, I guess I think that it's being, how it's being sent back to us is with a thought of us thinking about that 100-unit limit, of what we think about that. I think the concern there from city council was the idea that if we thought so favorably about this specific SUP, that potentially there might be many more, and that it might convert hundreds of rooms or something like that to this, not something that we were really thinking about at that point, but we were looking at what was in front of us. But, so I think that the idea of the limit is there so that there is not a wholesale change of potentially what are older hotel motel units into this category. I think it's been uniquely crafted in a way that does not satisfy some of the needs we thought it was previously providing, in that it's not going to provide the residents with a sort of a permanent address, a mailing address, and those kinds of things. I think that, again, you know, we're seeing it from the land use side, city council's seeing it from a bigger picture side of what is the impact on the school and our bill for the school system and things like that. So, I think that this is providing more of a stopgap measure than what had been potentially more of a constructive addition to the variety of housing options we have in the city.
I would say that some of my thoughts are, I think if it is likely, given council's reaction to the SUP that came through, that there would be some decision at some point that enough had been done, and that we didn't want to further encourage this kind of adaptive reuse, and in some ways, create a different kind of glut of units, that they would stop accepting these things. I do think that one thing this new setup does is make it clear to everyone that this is something that you can apply for, and that there's only a limited number of people will be approved. And I think it's a, does a better job of creating what I would consider to be a sort of competitive playing field for all hotel motel owners. I worry a little bit that under the other system, that it was going to be, this was the first person who got this idea in gets it approved, but then the door gets shut behind. And so I think one of the benefits of going this way, although there are certainly other issues, is that it does make it clear to everyone what the opportunities are and what the limits of those opportunities are, and I think gives other people a chance to consider whether this is something that they might want to do with their properties, and not have it be that they just had the bad luck to not come first before us. So, that's one thing I'd say.
But also, my sense for approving the SUP was the unique characteristics of that particular application. I would not feel comfortable approving the same set of circumstances for a motel on Richmond Road or Capital Landing.
But why not?
Well, I guess the, where this property is located is next to park, close to shopping, on the bus path, and our vision in the comp plan is a little bit different for Capital Landing and Richmond Road. We brought up City Lofts earlier. The only reason City Lofts was approved was that it was 500 feet set back from Richmond Road, had no visibility, so that adaptive reuse made sense. So I think in this particular area, QuarterPath, that area made sense to do it. I just, I have deep reservations about approving other uses of this site, especially on one of our busiest entrance corridors.
I'm concerned that there is not as much difference between the QuarterPath Inn and some of the Capital Landing Road properties as maybe we're pretending that there are, and then it become, it does feel that it might be something that we wouldn't be equally granting, because if you think about closeness to the shops, the shop being the gas station food mart is the only shop that QuarterPath is close to.
The-
Harris Teeter?
Yeah.
I don't know that it's farther to walk from some of those Capital Landing properties to the food, to the Farm Fresh than it is to the Harris Teeter. I, the distance is not that distinctly different, and there's the bodega right there. So, those characteristics, which in some ways seem like they're unique to QuarterPath, when you actually look at them, they actually, they aren't. They're both on entrance corridors, right? There's, you're right, there's not a park next to some of these other Capital Landing properties, but, you know, there is green space, there's the minor park, which is pretty small, but I mean, it just become, I think it, I think it seems like it's not as fair to say, there's so, this is the only place we're going to do it. I think that this proposal makes it a little bit more consistent across applicants, if there were to be other applicants.
Yeah, I think I had a pretty similar reaction to this proposal to Ms. Stafford, in that it is, it is a way to clarify to potential applicants what the parameters of the decision making will be, and so this isn't, this isn't a situation where, as you say, that the door will be shut behind the first and only applicant, but rather, we will, we will do some more of this under the following circumstances, and this sort of goes back to Mr. Wheels' question about whether it's better to do this through the SUP or to do it in the way that we've got before us tonight. And I think the advantage of doing it this way, in the way that we're being presented, is that it does provide some predictability, some expectations to potential applicants. So, it does seem to me that there's sort of two, there's two things that we need to decide tonight. The first is, is this better than the SUP and what we've already got in hand, the decision we've already made, is this a better way to handle this? A, and then B, is the way that this is written the way that we think is right? And key in there, I think, is this question of what the, what the right number is, but kind of going back to Demetrius's question, I think also key is this question of which kinds of properties would we, would we anticipate approving this kind of use? And there is actually language in the proposed ordinance. In Article 3 District Regulations, the last line reads, these kinds of projects, "The PDH district should not be located on sites that have significant redevelopment potential," which has kind of within it a sense of, well, we're not maybe going to approve this on Richmond Road, but in places that, in the near term anyway, don't, don't appear to be desirable or feasible for commercial development, which is obviously the decision that the applicant has made, this kind of, this PDH is something that we would, that we would support, or that we would at least consider. So there is, there is, if not an explicit answer to your objection, I think there is an understanding that it's not just open season across B2, but rather, it's in particular circumstances within B2 that a PDH would be permissible. So I think this is, I think this is a pretty reasonable way to solve it. I too, I just, you know, I really just don't know whether 100 is the right number. If I have any concerns, it's that basically we can, we can allow one more project, like the one that we've already got in hand, and so, while it doesn't close the door behind the first applicant, it closes the door behind the second theoretical applicant, and so I don't know that 100 is the right number. And I know there are other, there are many reasons not to set that number too high.
We need to see if it's going to work and how it works out for the city.
Yeah. Before, how do you mean?
For instance, it says no more than two properties. Maybe we can word it so it's up to two properties. What if no one else comes-
What if no one else comes forward to apply?
Mm-hmm. Would that be okay, right?
Yeah.
That's still, that's not a, that shouldn't be a problem, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, I mean, I just think there's a little bit of an uncomfortableness of the fact that the proposal on the table is taking up basically half of what we're eventually proposing, where, versus this idea of there being an RFP that says, you know, if you're thinking about doing this, it's gonna be 100.
Right.
And, you know, we'll have different people coming forward to maybe take lumps of that 100, and we'd have to cobble that together, but, so I mean, I have an uneasiness about that. I see that, but I think, so I think we need to think about what that number should be. So I don't think the idea, I don't think we, it is under our control at this point to say, like the 100 overall, sorry QuarterPath Associates, you have to wait, we're gonna do an RFP for six months, or something like that, you know? I mean, and that's, I mean, that's not, I don't think we have that ability to do, although I would feel, I think we all feel maybe a little more comfortable about that.
It would seem fair.
Yes, exactly. But.
Yeah. I don't think that's an option, though.
Worse is out of the line.
And it's, it's tough, you want to balance this by making this available to, to more than just one person. But you also want to say that there's, coming up with this idea and floating it, that, you know, time and energy went into thinking it through, and that doesn't mean that because you had a good idea, that you have to share it with all your, your competitor. I mean, I think that you want this sort of, it's not the only person who gets to do it, but the fact that you had, you took the, the energy to bring this forward and all the time and energy involved in that should, I think it's okay that, that means that there is one that's coming up earlier than others because you took the risk of.
Well, that's a good point. There's already, yeah, there's already a lot of investment in this idea. Yeah, that's a good point.
And as far as changing the, the hotel length of stay and things like that, I mean, it seems to me that it gives the hoteliers the same or, or better opportunities. I don't see that as an issue myself.
Yeah, the only thing I, I would want, and of course, this is gonna come into these exceptions that we aren't gonna see, but I'll just go ahead and get on the record, is, I agree that this temporary, temporary housing for families in crisis should be an exception. And I just don't know enough about this contract between the Williamsburg Human Services Department and the hotel motel, as opposed to what might happen from United Way. And I wouldn't want this to be something that other families, so I would just want it to be on the record that I, while I understand moving the regulations into something that is not in our purview, and I do think that this exception for families in crisis, I would hope that someone would think and make sure that by restricting it to be contact with the Williamsburg Human Services Department, that we weren't excluding other very, you know, thoughtfully and well-designed programs to help families in crisis that are being done by nonprofits.
I won't presume to speak for Mr. Wallantish, but I believe that United Way and the other social services agencies that are not necessarily governmental have a close relationship with the Williamsburg Department of Human Services, the James City County Department of Human Services, and so it would simply be a matter of working through the Department of Human Services to provide that housing. United Way may ultimately be paying for it, but it would simply be Human Services, Williamsburg Human Services as a gatekeeper.
That, that would be perfect. Just wanted to make sure that that did not become an issue.
And plus, this proposal also, I mean, this goes, this is a good step into trying to solve a problem we have here in the city. And I was happy that QuarterPath Associates came forward to do that. Unfortunately, the city has the lion's share of the older motels in town, and I personally believe that the way this is crafted will allow the city to do its share in, in helping these folks, and hopefully they can transition to a more permanent house. Because I, I don't think James City County is doing anything with their motel properties currently. The only one I could think of was the motel on Airport Road, which they condemned.
Right. For, for good purposes, a mold.
I understand. But I mean, I think this goes, I think this goes a long way.
So, and I agree. I mean, I think that it does cover a lot of ground. One of the other properties that we did talk about when we were talking about the QuarterPath Associates property was the Super 8 across from Food Lion. And my, my understanding of that conversation through the lens of, of what we now have is that that property would probably be denied, the ability to do this, because they are sort of right up front, commercial development potential, you know, business-owned property.
That property would not be eligible to apply because it is in the B3 district.
B3, okay.
Any other questions, comments? Anyone like to take a stab at a motion? See you smiling, Joe.
Just because I, I don't think I can.
You crack all those things together in one night.
Less than one paragraph. I'm gonna lose track. Well, let's see, I'll, I'll give it a try, and you help, you help edit me, if you're willing. I move that we accept the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance described in PCR-15-003, 004, 005, and 006 to create the PDH Plan Development Housing District.
I'll second that.
Murphy?
Mr. Schaller?
Aye.
Mr. Clee?
Aye.
Mr. Conley?
Aye.
Mr. Poragus?
Aye.
Ms. McGett?
Aye.
Ms. Edber?
Aye.
Moving on to our open forum. If anyone would like to come address the commission about any matter that it has purview over, please do so now. State your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I'll close our open forum. Nothing under site plan subdivisions, nothing under unfinished business. Actually, we'll include this in new business. We have a resolution for Dan Quarles, who served on the Planning Commission for some time, I believe Ms. Stafford has it, if you'd like to read it.
I'll read it, and then I'll pass it to Mr. Schaller for his signature. So, the resolution, "Whereas, following eight and one-half years of service on the Architectural Review Board, Daniel Quarles was appointed to the Williamsburg Planning Commission on July 1, 2010, and has ably served for four years and eight months, his tenure ending on February 23, 2015. And whereas, he participated in the preparation of the 2013 Comprehensive Plan, which was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission in December 2012, after an extensive review process including, involving 19 work sessions, two community forums, and a public hearing, and which was adopted by City Council in January 2013. And whereas, he provided expertise and guidance to the commission and the city in the revision of the zoning ordinance based on the recommendations of the 2013 Comprehensive Plan, which required 24 separate zoning amendment proposals in 2013. And whereas, he served as a member of the Site Plan Review Committee for one and a half years, where his knowledge of development and experience greatly assisted in the review of 11 site plans and subdivisions. And whereas, he served as the Planning Commission's representative on the Beautification Advisory Committee for three years and two months, making a valuable contribution by helping to preserve Williamsburg, Williamsburg's unique character. Now therefore be it resolved that the Williamsburg Planning Commission hereby recommend, sorry, hereby records its appreciation to Daniel Quarles for his outstanding service on the commission and on the Site Plan Review and Beautification Advisory Committees." Signed by all of us.
We will accept the resolution.
I'll second.
Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Schaller?
Aye.
Mr. Clee?
Aye.
Mr. Conley?
Aye.
Mr. Poragus?
Aye.
Ms. McGett?
Aye.
Ms. Edber?
Aye.
Since Mr. Quarles has departed the commission, we have to appoint a new Planning Commission member to the Beautification Advisory Committee. I've spoken with Mr. Schaller gratefully about it. He's willing to serve if, if anyone else.
Perfect. Works for me.
Sounds great.
Justice, congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay, under informational items, I'd just like to point out, I hope everyone read the City Manager Memorandum on the CIP. I thought that was very important, that, that we look at that and look at Mr. Tubbs' comments. We have a few public hearings scheduled for April 15, 2015, PCR-15-007, and that's to amend the zoning ordinance by revising the regulations for banner signs for museums for the floor area of at least 75,000 square feet. It is proposed to allow, to allow a second 100-square-foot banner sign at the main entrance. And PCR-15-008, which is a request to QuarterPath Associates to rezone 2.88 acres at 614 and 620 QuarterPath Roads from B2 to the new PDH Plan Development Housing District, to convert 60 of the existing 128 motel rooms into 47 adaptive housing units. And I guess that'll be in April. Other than that, adjourn the meeting. Thank you.